Welcome to the planning board meeting Monday, June 12th, 2023. Six P. No, yes, July, July, July 10th, 2023, 6:00 PM. The town administrator meeting room, Millville Town Hall, 290 Main Street, Millville, Mass. First thing we'll do is roll call. So Jason?
Here.
Preston?
Here.
Pam Williams?
Here.
Justin, I am here. All right. Moving to the agenda. General business, approval of the, approval of the minutes from the June 12th meeting. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from June 12th, 2023 with the clerical changes that Dylan's gonna make.
Excellent. Do you wanna speak on those or do you just want me to review it for those at home?
Yeah, I can't hear.
Okay, all right. So the, the clerical changes to the minutes as presented are going to be striking associate from Pam Williams' title on the board. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay.
The motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, we'll vote on it. Jason?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Okay, I approve them as well. So, okay. All right. Moving on, public forum. There is no one here but us. So we'll move on. Open associate member position. So appointment with interested party. This is Roland. And he's going to be appointed hopefully at the selectmen's meeting tonight.
Yeah, there should be a vote tonight. He should be there at the selectmen's meeting since he already met you guys last time. And the selectman asked if either Roland or somebody from planning or both could be there in attendance tonight just to speak on about Roland and the position and what they're voting on.
Okay, and I think Jason said that he's gonna be able to be there for it.
Great, excellent.
Excellent, okay. All right, moving on. The CMRPC bylaw diagnostic. We did a lot of, a lot of work on that last week. Do we wanna continue and pick up where we left off? Okay. Does anybody have any?
I left my paperwork at home.
Okay, so we do have some, would you like?
I'll take Brewster.
We do have Brewster, we have Millville, Situate, Uxbridge or Bellingham?
I'll take Uxbridge.
Okay, Uxbridge. Uxbridge, Blackstone, okay. All right, I have somebody's. I have somebody's work here. It is very well marked up.
Probably Pam's.
Yeah, it's probably either Pam's or Dylan's. Oh, I have Mendon here too, so. All right, Dylan, do you wanna, do you wanna take us through and kick us off or?
Yeah, sure. So I don't have in front of me, I have the bylaws in front of me, but not my notes. I'm not sure where we left off on, on the list. I know we were going through the, the commercial, the industrial, I think as well, institutional. Did we go through all of them? Did we get down to the end? We might have because I know mixed uses at the end. I know we had a small discussion on that.
Trying to, it's been a while. Trying to make use of, of sort of what we have here.
I'm gonna switch to Mendon.
No, I just. Now, I, the only thing I have here is the, is the stuff we went over last time. So i- is there something in these binders?
The binder should just be the bylaws if you wanna look at what Millville has right now. I think what would be very helpful, especially because we're in July at this point. The autumn is coming up, but we still have some time. Maybe picking a few things from the commercial use regulations that we think doesn't need to have a special permit. We might need to, you know, might want to change to permitted as right allowable use. Maybe if you guys have some thoughts on some of those items. Some of the ones that, you know, like we, we just had the, the office space come in. Do you wanna think about maybe office spaces don't need to come in for a special permit? Maybe some of the, let me see. The bank, the, maybe certain.
Oh.
The real estate, things like that. If we wanna like highlight a few of those, that might be easy to just say, we wanna allow this in whatever district, no special permit needed and just sort of focus on those as one item that we would put on for the town meeting.
Oh, okay. So I have the notes that someone took last time here. And we did make a, some significant changes to a lot of the commercial stuff already. So if we wanted to highlight a handful that we wanted to put forward during the fall town meeting?
Yeah, I think reviewing the commercial section specifically.
Okay.
You know, what we did last time, I think we went over sort of everything.
Yeah.
Maybe today, highlight a few that you guys feel.
Okay.
The four of you sort of all agree on or you can, you know, you can see it passing a town meeting maybe.
Okay, well then, well then let me just take it from the top. And what we can do is we can just sort of, we'll go through all of them, the changes that we did make. And then, you know, make a note if, if you wanna come back to, to something or if you wanna, you know, push it forward. Okay, so commercial. The first item was retail store distributing merchandise to the general public. We made changes to the village center and the commercial business districts. We changed, we changed those to yes, Ys. Which are, just to review, what does the, the Y stand for?
The Y should be, yes permitted.
Yes, it's permitted.
Allowable by right. They don't have to come in for a permit.
Okay, all right, yep. All right. The second, we, it's craft, consumer, professional or commercial service establishment dealing directly with the public. It looked like we wanted to change it to Mendon's definition of craft or.
I'm looking Mendon here. Craft shop or artist, potter sculptor, woodcarver or similar craftsmen.
Okay, it sounds like they more clearly defined the trades that, you know, we're, we're sort of doing that.
And they have no on their rural residential, planning board on their general residential. And then yes, yes on general business and no on highway business.
That's interesting.
Okay, we did not make any changes to any of our districts. So they, they stayed, no.
What are they?
They stayed no for outlying residential. They stayed special permit for village residential. They stayed special permit for village center. And they need a permit for commercial business. It's P.
So is that something where we'd wanna take the permit requirements off of village center and commercial?
I would think it's a retail business.
Um, to, while you think about that, to complicate things, we were also looking at adding sort of like a, a 2B on that for retail that may include fabrication and assembly on premises. So we were actually looking at sort of cutting that in half.
Okay, so that one I feel like is a little more complicated what we wanna do with it. But it would, you know, still something we can absolutely bring to town meeting. But it wouldn't just be on the same item, I think, as we're just changing SP to Y.
Sure.
You know, so yes, let's definitely.
Yeah, understood.
That one looks a little more complicated, but I think so far the first one, retail store, I'm just gonna highlight that one as we just wanna change the, the letters.
Right. Okay. Okay, the third one, restaurant or other establishment serving food and beverage to be consumed within the building. We changed the village center and commercial business to just yes by right. They can, they can do that. And we changed village residential. Looks like we were looking at special permit. We, we crossed it out, but then somebody wrote it back in with a question mark, so. Not sure, not sure about that. But actually, while we're talking about this, I'm sort of drawn to the consumed within the building. I know a lot of restaurants sort of have patios and outdoor seating and that stuff's nice.
Yeah.
So especially, you know, since COVID. So I mean, is that? Do we wanna?
Is that to keep drive-throughs out of or takeaway? Like what's, what do?
Oh, the history of it?
Like what's the spirit of it?
Restaurant or other establishment serving food and beverage to be consumed within the building.
I assume that has to do with alcohol law. Because you have to consume alcohol within the confines of the restaurant. But it doesn't have to be the confines within the building. It, you know, they could use their patio. I think they just mean you can't drink in the street.
If we were to change within the building to on premises?
On premises.
Yeah. That, that makes it more flexible, right?
Yep.
People to have patios and stuff?
Yep.
And that's got all kinds of hoops it still has to jump through, so why, why make us an additional one, you know?
Okay. All right. I guess we can, I guess we can come back to whether or not what we wanna do for village residential there. Any, I guess, any initial thoughts?
Is Potfellain Village Residential? Or is that commercial?
Is where?
JM Pizza?
Oh, um, that's a good question. I don't have the map in front of me and.
I'm just wondering if that's not village residential, what would be?
That I think, that I think is village center or, or commercial, as little of it as we have.
Residential.
Yeah, it's a lot of mixed use.
One of those things where it's already in play.
All right, well, it's crossed out here, then it's written back in. We can, we can move on.
My opinion would be that as a district defined as residential, you might still wanna keep special permit for any of those when it comes to businesses being put into what was, what's defined as a residential district, even though you might have some businesses in that area. That might be a little more sacred to some of the homeowners in the area.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with that. Yeah. Okay, so we'll keep special permit there for, for village residential.
Okay.
Okay.
So special permit on village, the residential?
Yes, on, on village residential.
Yep.
Okay, number four, we had undertaking establishment or funeral home. The only change we did was we made commercial business a special permit instead of just permitted.
I think the P is site plan review only. So yeah, switch to special permit instead.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, number five, hotel motel. We changed village residential from special permit to no. We just said no about that. And then there's a note here regarding things like Airbnb. And then a note saying maybe Uxbridge. So does Uxbridge have a, do you know what's going on in Uxbridge?
Uxbridge has a clear definition, I think. It doesn't just say hotel motel. I think it has a number of feet it is away from property lines or something like that.
Says at least two acres area and at least 150 feet from any permanent residential building. And then it's allowed in zoning districts A, B, IA, IB.
That's agricultural, industrial.
Yeah, so it's allowed in some of the areas.
Yep. So their, their regulation there does sort of prohibit Airbnb automatically. Some towns will have it separate. So a hotel and a motel has a separate bylaw than something that's like a bed and breakfast. Even if an Airbnb doesn't have a bed and breakfast, you know, component, it might be worthwhile to sort of make sure hotels and motels, big establishments, facilities with, you know, 50 rooms in it, you wanna make sure they have a lot of space around them, parking. You know, they're away from other residents. You might wanna separate that out. So making it clear what a hotel and motel is versus us, a house, a residence that somebody rents a room in for a few nights, it might be worth making that distinction.
Do you, do you see it where, you know, hotel is explicitly defined, motel is explicitly defined, bed and breakfast is explicitly defined and something like a, like an Airbnb is situation is explicitly defined?
What they're called, that. It's like something with a V. Not Airbnb, it's something about like low occupancy, vacation rental or something like that. You can have a separate thing for that, a separate thing for, for bed and breakfast. Hotel and motel, I don't ever see that separated. I think motel is honestly a, a dated term at this point. It's just a hotel where you drive to it. So what's the, the difference so much? You know, sometimes it's a type of hotel where the door is on the outside. You enter from the outside in instead of a hallway, right? But if you wanna make a distinction between those two and say only hotels where the hallway is inside, you know, again.
Okay, so clearly we need to discuss that line item a little bit more, so we'll, we'll, we'll pass on that for now. Professional office or agency. The only, we change, the only thing we kept was a no for outlying residential. And then we changed everything else to yes, that it's by right. Okay, number seven was bank or other financial institution. We changed village center and commercial business to yes, no longer needing a special permit for that. And then we kept the special permit for village residential and outlying residential. A no for outlying residential. All right, next, insurance or real estate office. Much like the professional office or agency, we changed the village residential, village center and commercial business to yes by right. We had a lot of notes on the next one. The commercial indoor amusement or recreation place or place of assembly. We have notes here that we might wanna separate some of those out. Amusements, recreation facilities break out into sort of their own section with a reference to the way they're doing it in Mendon.
Mendon.
I think Mendon we referenced because they have a adult entertainment bylaw, which is very helpful for the protection of where something like that could go. You can't really say no to certain places because establishments have rights, the owners of properties have rights to put in certain establishments. But you wanna make sure you clearly define where that's allowed.
Okay.
Yeah, they have one, two, three, four, five, six, it broken down into six items.
Yeah, they, they get pretty, they get pretty granular and specific.
I don't think we need drive-in movie theater like they do, but.
With their stuff, yeah.
Yeah. But at least I think a place of assembly and an amusement might be very different.
I'm looking forward to the Millville Country Club.
Yeah.
All right. Again, that's a little more complicated, so.
Yeah, so I'll leave that on the side.
The next one was contracting business and equipment storage yard. We were gonna keep it as is. It's special permit across the board. What we were gonna entertain is maybe add some things like hazardous materials and maybe move it entirely from commercial to industrial. Okay. The next ones are really all untouched. So bed and breakfast in. The, and then the next one, two, three, or six are all about marijuana. Those were recently done, so keep those that. There's the seventh marijuana one that we, that we kept. 19, large scale ground mounted solar voltaic installation as defined in subsection 100-1103 and located outside the renewable energy overlay district.
So that probably, same with the marijuana is more recently, was more recently put into the bylaws?
Okay.
Should probably keep that the same if you want, unless there's anything new.
Well, we circled outside, so. Refresh my memory maybe why we decided to address that particular part of it.
I think, I, I'm not sure exactly why outside because there is a overlay district that is for solar. The renewable energy overlay district. This looks to be like it is just anything that is solar but not in that district. You might, we might wanna not have it here in commercial. I think it should, same with the marijuana, we should have a section besides commercial, besides industrial that says overlay district, you know, renewable energy overlay district. Marijuana. Some, I think Mendon might have or Uxbridge might have sections where they say, here is all of our solar stuff in one section instead of saying just 19, tack it out at the bottom, anything that doesn't exist in the other, put here.
Do we, do we sort of expect that solar is going to grow and become more complicated and require its own sort of section and treatment?
Yes, I would say there are laws changing that have changed in the last year and will be changing this year about what sort of solar things towns are allowed to say no to and what things they're not allowed to say no to. Particularly battery storage or these, these facilities that are like, they're like, almost like storage containers, but they just store energy from the power lines or from a solar field. Those are being allowed and towns are, their decision to say no are being overturned. So we might wanna be more specific about certain solar installations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, that makes sense. I mean, we, I mean, we have a whole separate thing just for automotive sales and service. There's no reason why we can't or shouldn't have ones specifically for solar. Okay. And then, so that completes all of the commercial use ones, so. Certainly, certainly there's some low hanging fruit here. You know, I, I think we can probably go with certainly number six, seven and eight. That's the professional or office agency. That's the bank or financial institution. That's the insurance or real estate office. I mean, those were very sort of simple, straightforward changes.
So yeah, one, six, seven and eight seem like the ones that we kinda like.
Yeah, yeah. And number one, the retail store distributing merchandise to the general public.
Yep.
So the next step would be to make a motion to push these towards the town meeting, to have Dylan write them? Write the changes for us?
Okay, does that sound appropriate?
I can't hear.
So do we need to, do we need to sort of make a motion to have you go forward with, with these, with these ones?
Not, not until we are writing up the, the actual warrant articles. You should be fine until then. So right now, we're just, we're discussing and it's always on the agenda as something that someone can come in, talk about it with us. But yeah, I'm just gonna write up these notes and once we get a little closer to the town meeting, there'll be a, a formal vote if you guys want to push it forward to, to the warrant, as a warrant article.
Okay, is it? I mean, since, since the, since line 19, the large scale ground mounted solar installation is only sort of like the one thing. Does it, is it, would you consider it low hanging fruit or worthwhile to just move that into its own, its own letter?
Yeah, it might be easy just to put that on as.
And we can just copy and paste that one. So we can sort of take the first step and create its own silo and then.
And then add.
And then address it later.
Yeah.
Okay.
That might be easier. And that's what we, I think are, that's the whole plan here is just to slowly fix the little things so that it's cleaner and ready and, and then we can build it out into something bigger.
And just sort of question that I have. So G is the last one in our list. It's mixed use. Does solar become G and do we push G to H or does solar become H?
I think solar would probably become H. I'm surprised that, that mixed use just has its own section, but like there's nothing about it. It just says the words mixed use.
It does. And then, and then there's just a special.
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll tack things onto the bottom like solar, maybe marijuana as a section on its own as well. Because marijuana can be agricultural. It doesn't have to be commercial. But I think mixed use, we might, you might also wanna talk about taking that language and putting a little more substance there besides just the word mixed use. besides just the words mixed use.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll say solar probably H, think about marijuana as I.
Okay.
Was that Pam that just walked in?
It is.
Hello, how are you?
I'll send you to the, uh, minutes.
Okay, uh, amp, uh, Pam. Uh, we just, uh, we just went over.
I was listening, I heard.
Okay, all right, perfect. Okay. So, yeah, so we just went over those and picked those.
For the, um, the automotive, automotive section, I do have a, a comment here I'd love to go over with you guys.
Okay.
I was looking at things, uh, over the last few weeks. And I know, I think we did mention this last time, but, um, number D four here, sale of motor vehicles incidental to the above. Right now, there is no sale of motor vehicles, from what I can see, that is on its own. You can't just sell cars. You have to sell cars at a gas station or at a repair garage or at an auto body shop. You can't just sell cars.
Okay, we have a note.
That was odd.
We, we have a note here that says auto dealerships, uh, semicolon, class two.
Yep, so, yeah, so class two, I, I never remember what class is which, but, um, the clerk has different licenses for auto dealerships, um, class one, class two. So a lot of bylaws will have them separated out or just allow certain ones. Look it up.
I wonder what the intent of that was excluding it, just to keep it out of people's driveways or?
Used cars.
Yeah.
Class two used cars.
Okay.
Usually class one is new, class two is used, class three is junk or salvage. So most people just allow class one and class two.
But a class two has to be attached to a gas station or repair facility. She can't, John Dylan can't.
Okay. We didn't make any changes to any of the zoning or anything, so do we just need to update that definition or?
Yeah, I, I wanted to, you know, see what the opinion of the board was. How, you know, would you like to, to see, um, dealerships at all or, you know, just sale of motor vehicles? If it's, um, not connected to one of those three other items, is that something you would want to change?
I can't really understand why we wouldn't.
I can't visualize like, uh, a dealership anywhere in town just based on physical space and size and.
Right, because Millville Service, I'm guessing they'll have a class, does he have a class two permit to sell vehicles?
So we have a couple of notes. We have Zeno's.
Yeah.
Millville Service and Andy's are, are jotted down here in the margins.
Yeah.
So.
I think those are the ones that are known to already be in town.
As class two.
I think they, they, they might also sell cars or we were mentioning them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, if somebody had a gas station and they no longer wanted to sell the gas and just wanted to use their lot for used cars that they wanted to sell, they wouldn't really be allowed.
Without a repair shop.
Without a repair shop.
Yeah, they have to, they have to have one of these other businesses going on at the same time. We don't have to have a class one, we don't have to have like new car dealership, but, um, but do you want to allow somebody to, to just sell cars? You know, the same as they might sell, uh, we might have a retail store. We can always have it be, you need this amount of space and you need, uh, you know, certain requirements to be met. But, you know, you don't have to have it be as like by right.
What do you have to tell?
I thought it was odd that we don't allow just sale of used cars on a, on a parcel property.
Just offer it, that we don't, uh, I'm, I'm trying to understand the mindset of why we wouldn't. Is that something that you've seen anyplace, Dylan?
I can't, is that Pam talking? I can't hear you.
Yeah, sorry, where's the microphones? Okay, thank you. Can you hear me now, Dylan? No, is it not your computer?
No, nope, definitely not mine.
It'll be, the mic's, the computer, maybe because it's on facing away from you.
How about now?
Yeah, you're perfect.
All right, perfect. I'm, I'm trying to understand the mindset of why we wouldn't, uh, allow for that in some way, shape, or form with, with some, you know, stipulations or however it is that we might do it. But I'm wondering if you've seen any place else like us that doesn't allow for that or what, what the reasoning might be that, that I'm unable to come up with right now.
I'm, I'm not sure why not. Um, I don't think I've come across it as something that, it seems to me like an oversight, but I don't know if I'm wrong on that. I don't know if there was a reason to avoid this. If it is something like you just can't imagine a dealership being in town. But I do believe some of these like service stations do also sell cars. It's just odd to me to think that they have to do that other business in order to have this on the side.
I mean, my opinion is that we're sitting here today trying to come up with ways to make our town more inclusive for business. So I don't, I can't come up with a reason to restrict that.
Yeah, and you could always reasonably restrict it and, you know, keep it as a special permit. Uh, they need to have a certain amount of space, they can only do it a certain way, but I don't know, I just found it odd.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, do we want to dip into the industrial stuff? We, we, um, the first industrial was wholesale warehouse and storage facility. We basically changed that from village residential from special permit to no, effectively taking that out of that area. And then everything else stayed the, stayed the same.
That sounds good. It's another easy one.
That's another easy one.
Yeah.
And then the next one, any manufacturing or industrial use, including processing, fabrication, and assembly, provided that no such use shall be permitted, which would be detrimental or offensive or tend to reduce property values by reason of dirt, odor, fumes, smoke, gas, sewerage, refuse, noise, excessive vibration, or danger of explosion or fire.
So this to me looks exactly like what would come up in the special permit hearing. Uh, all of these would need to be satisfied, so that's probably why we have special permit on here.
Okay.
It's showing you exactly what the planning board is going to be looking at when they're granting or denying the special permit.
Okay, we have a note here that says check language around all of it, so.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot, but, you know, looking at it a second time, I think I, I think that's why it's there. It's literally for the planning board to use in their decision-making.
Sure.
Yep.
We were changing it from the village residential to no on that one, correct?
We are, we are. Village residential is becoming known, we're leaving it special permit in the other, um, in the other two places. Is that a, that another easy one? Are, are there any other, I'm like, okay, you know, I'm going by the senses, okay? You know, sight, you know, touch, hearing, you know, like all, all of it. So any, any, any other, any other things we can think of there or is that pretty comprehensive?
Yeah, that looks good. I can always look at some other bylaws and see if there's anything we might want to take from it, but this looks good to me.
Okay. All right, uh, moving on to public, semi-public, and institutional, um, stuff. We have, um, a lot of notes about, so number one, church or other place of worship, parish, house, rectory, convent, and other religious institution is yes across the board. We didn't make any changes there. The second one, school, public, religious, sectarian, or denominational, that one's got a lot of notes. Private school, trade, professional, or other school conducted as a private business. Thoughts on that or?
I think we pulled that from another, another town.
Yeah, I think we were just trying to be more inclusive and of the types of educational facilities.
Okay, I would imagine, you know, um, like trade schools though requiring certain, you know, plant features, you know, uh, that, that could exceed, you know, them being in like sort of residential areas.
Yes.
So.
So maybe we need to separate that out.
So do we need to separate that out and keep sort of, sort of put schools in, in certain like boxes where like they, they might need special, you know, special permits?
Yeah, you could definitely separate that out. I'll just take a note on that and we can sort of flesh it out.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, like the, the BVT power plant is like massive.
Not something that's coming to Millville anytime soon.
Right, um, yeah. Okay, uh, numbers three and four, um, had no changes.
Yep.
I had a note that we wanted to consider adding a club, a lodge, or some other philanthropic type of location. Was that, was a separate thing?
Oh, um, yeah, I mean, it's not listed, but it entirely makes sense.
Yeah.
What is?
Sort of like the, um, like, like a, like a club. Are we talking about like the?
Like the Polish Hall or, uh, Elks Club or?
Yeah.
Can't hear anything Pam's saying. I don't know why as soon as you turned.
Like the Polish Hall that we have in town or an Elks Club or?
We did mention that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I think with the, um, what was it? We're gonna separate it out, um, using, oh, place of assembly. We want to separate that out and maybe put clubs and, and things like that in there. So it's not a religious plate. We have commercial indoor amusement, recreation place, or place of assembly. I feel like, uh, um, a social club would be a place of assembly. We could say social clubs.
I think that makes sense as a place to add it.
Yeah, yeah.
And if we're gonna leave language like that, we definitely.
I'll just do a time check, I think it's, yeah, six fifty about now. Um, I saw Peter walk by, so just so you know, they, they'll have their room in about ten minutes.
What I was gonna say is if we're gonna have that language in there, we need to definitely separate adult use.
Yes.
Because that's, you just opened that up to.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because that's an indoor entertainment space.
Yep.
Luckily indoor, um, yeah.
Where did we have public, uh, like a place of assembly? I can't find it.
It is, it's in commercial and it's under commercial indoor amusement or recreation place or place of assembly, number nine.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, we wanted to like separate that out a bit.
Yeah.
Yep, that'll be part of that.
And where is it allowed? I don't have that.
What, where is that allowed?
That was allowed if, um.
Oh, um.
We left it the same, so it was special permit everywhere except for District OR.
Yeah, it was special permit for everything except for outlying residential where it was just no.
So if we don't isolate that, I mean, special permit doesn't mean a rejection. That means, you know, if they meet all considerations, we have to approve it.
Yep. So I, I think the plan is to isolate that, right? Okay.
Yep, but you have to give it a, a place for it to be eaten or to be accepted.
This is, this is adult, this is adult, adult use.
Of adult use, because this is what Mendon.
Mendon has it broken down as one no in their RR. And then the other three, it says C-section five dash O one for permissible locations for this use and permits required. They don't put anything else except for one no and then the other three list that.
And that meant right next door to the drive-in.
It do works.
So do we, do we create, so we were moving solar to H, marijuana to I? Do we, you know, put adults, adult use as J?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that.
That'll probably be a bigger discussion, too big for a few months that we have, but.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah, I think we'd want to get legal counsel involved because that's a very difficult topic to sort of fit and to make sure we cover our bases both, you know, legally and, and so the residents are, are protected as well.
And I think, I think that's the problem is that the, the public would see that as us trying to promote it as opposed to trying to regulate it so we actually are protected. So that's a tough sell, but.
So is that something that we can add in? So is this something that we can maybe like move forward with sections through H? And then later at the next meeting, add in I or whatever, whatever letter we were up to?
Yeah, I think the, the next thing, I will sort of separate out everything. The low-hanging fruit, the easy stuff, we can say, hey, we're just changing some SPs to Ys. We're just, you know, just changing some letters and.
Trying to make it more inclusive, yeah.
So that's like one item and then maybe another item would be we're adding these sections. We're not gonna put a lot in them yet, but we want to add these, these placeholders for when we sort of go through this.
When we're ready.
And that'll be another item that we can bring to a meeting. And then I know we have a few language changes we want to make, that'll probably be a third item.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, so I can start writing out, um, what the warrant articles would look like, like we did last time. And then we can go from there on those.
Okay, Dylan, are we, um, or should we, should we stop here with our progress and move forward with sort of the rest of the meeting so we can wrap up?
That sounds great.
Okay, um, let me just take the, uh, okay, um, next meeting. Uh, two weeks from now would be?
Seven twenty-four, July tenth?
July twenty-four.
Yep, seven twenty-four, um, is that good?
Sure.
Okay, all right, next meeting, six PM, seven twenty-four. Uh, motion to close the meeting?
I will make a motion to close the meeting.
In a second.
Okay, um, all right, entertain a motion to close the meeting. We have Jason with the motion and Pam with the, Pam M with the, with the, oh, Pam M with the second. Jason.
Aye.
Pam, Pam M.
Aye.
Pam W.
Aye.
Preston.
Aye.
Justin, I say I as well, um, have a good night, everybody.